Aren't these nice mics, everybody? If you like them. And if you do go to the microphone, which Ms. Kaiser can train you, but they're already on, they're not voice activated, so you don't have to get right up on it like this, like the other ones. So today's work session agenda is just to review the agenda. Are there any questions on the minutes, statements and checks, treasurer's report? I really don't have a supervisor's report, clerk's report? Treasurer's report? Trustee's report? I do have a report. Want to give it now? Okay, great. I can give it now during the meeting. Let me just pull up my notes here. So, just a second. Okay. I had just wanted to go over some information that also Supervisor Stumbo was at, which is the West Willow meeting last night, and particularly the discussion in regards to the Rad Construction Project. It was, I had asked some questions of the residents in West Willow, so I'm just going to go over the notes of those questions. Residents in West Willow confirmed they would like to eliminate the left turn from Dorset Street onto West US 12 as a part of that reconstruction project. Residents also confirmed that they would like access closed from Service Drive Road onto Dorset Street as a part of the project. Residents also confirmed they would like to see if signage can be added indicating drivers are entering the I-94 Expressway via the roundabout and on the eastbound US 12, entering the junction on Dorset Street for Boulevard, West Mount, US 12 as a part of the project. Couple lastings. I attended the MLK celebration at EMU, Second Baptist Church in the city of Plante, and also the YCS art project called "Our Voices Will Be Heard" at Silent Peaches March, an art exhibit, which was on North Washington Street, and that was led by township resident and also YCS art instructor Lynn Settles. And briefly, I know some people may be aware that there was an accident over off of McCarty and St. Street. I just spoke to Deputy Rush to see if that would, if basically with the pedestrian foot traffic that exists in that area, if there would be an idea of maybe putting lights there. Deputy Rush stated that the area is dark at night and lighting would enhance safety of the foot traffic in that area. Last but not least, I wanted to make sure I gave a thank you to Humane Society at Grand Valley for their recent rescue of 21 cats near La Forge and Clark Road. The cats were in a garage if out heater lights. The animals were located in wire traps and otherwise deplorable conditions for animal safety. The story was highlighted on Detroit Free Press on January 13th, as well as MLive, and also today, there was update on MLive on the cats' well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I just have a quick report as well. On Tuesday, January 3rd, myself and Trustee Eldridge went to the Hawthorne-Oaklawn Neighborhood Watch Program. They had a couple of questions about the construction, which I did a great job of explaining to them for the ACM project. And they also had some concerns about the mail issue, which we've heard plenty about and we know is being addressed, so that was just reinforced. We also attend, I also attended the Neighborhood Watch meeting on Holmes Road on the 10th, and just some, a few concerns about streetlights were brought up there. I referred them to definitely be in communication with myself, as well as our clerk, Lovejoy Rowe, about that. Just for everyone who's here, who's a resident, to know, we have different updates for recycling that was talked about at the Neighborhood Watch meetings. We're no longer taking the plastic bags. It's a really big hazard for the people that work at the recycling center. And I'm trying to think if there's anything else that I wanted to add. And to remind you all to lock your car doors. Deputy Rush has, in his reports, shared a lot of car thefts in the last month, so just make sure you lock your car doors, even if you are in a bad habit of not doing that like myself. So, thank you.
Supervisor Stumbo, I did have one more thing. Thank you. I just wanted to see if we could do a, and I'm not sure where to put this exactly on the agenda, but a township recognition, recognize a Chitara Clayborne for her work inside of the community of Plante Township to stabilize neighborhoods with, and in her former position as a community development coordinator for Habitat for Humanity, so just wanted to add that.
All right. The Attorney, oh. Yes, ma'am?
I just would like to make a comment about this business, about the streets not being lit and all that type of thing. People are not careful anymore. When I was growing up, people were taught to wear light colored clothes at night. They don't go across the street at the crosswalks. The township has spent a lot of money doing the crosswalks. They walk wherever they want, where it's dark, you can't see them, and yet the cars are responsible. What, what happens to the responsibility of the walking person, the person on the bicycle? And like now Ann Arbor is doing, you have to stay five foot away from them? So what are we going to do with the cars? Are we not allowed to drive? It's going to cause problems. And I was making a left, or excuse me, a right-hand turn on a red light. The crosswalk was, you know, the hand was up, the person was not to walk. He started out while the hand was there. So if I would have hit him, whose fault is it? He was walking when he shouldn't have. They don't take any responsibility. So why do I have to be responsible for everybody else? Everybody needs to take a share in the whole thing.
Ms. Kaiser, for the record.
Arloa Kaiser, 1421 Melville.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the person who does the minutes or not, I mean, okay. I didn't know that.
Thank you.
I should have stressed that.
Attorney Winters, I don't know if you have a general legal update, but I know the request, am I doing it right?
Yeah.
Do you have a general legal update?
May I now? Okay. Can you hear me now? Anyways, I think Jeff's here tonight on something unrelated to the issue of Tyler Pond, but I know that we have received during the holidays, updates from Jeff and from Scott Westover in regards to their efforts to obtain the required permits so as to allow Dan's excavating to commence with the lowering of the Tyler Pond. And I believe all those permits are now in order, and I think that Jeff is waiting for a construction schedule to be issued. And that's also important because it's part of the ongoing efforts to not only lower the Tyler Pond and address the issues that the township has to face from the MDEQ, but also it's also, it's also going to result in the township receiving additional funds in the amount of $300,000 to offset the costs associated with the Tyler Pond, Tyler Dam project. And again, that schedule I think is now been set, and it should be completed by the end of February. And that's important because in our development agreement, we have projected that we will be done by March the 1st to qualify for those funds being released, and it appears that we're on track to achieve that. The American Center for Mobility continues to really press forward in a very aggressive timeline to meet their project deadlines of November/December for Phase 1 to be completed. There are some ongoing logistical issues associated with the Nexus pipeline, probably as part of, and also unrelated to the request for easements from Nexus pipeline. But it's so, it's such a critical path for the township to make sure that the ACM project comes in on time, that we're going to do that we possibly can from the township, from the development team and the consultants upstairs, to make sure that they stay on a schedule for that opening in November, December this year. So those are probably the highlights of some of the things that we're working on during the holiday timeline, in addition to the ongoing challenges to achieve neighborhood stabilization by trying to hold everyone accountable for their properties. And the other issues on here about Nexus, I can discuss that whenever the Board has any questions or on the agenda.
It's next.
Oh, it's next, okay. Nexus, Nexus, okay. Okay, well, is there, is there anyone here tonight from Nexus? I was kind of curious.
They had actually called, and I had told them that we're more than welcome to come, but that it wasn't necessary, that we weren't doing presentations or answering questions. They're not here because I didn't make them come.
No, I know they had a meeting the day that they were attending over here at 3:00. I thought maybe they might have just come on over from that, from that meeting at 3:00. In regards to the issue of Nexus, it continues to be one that the Township Board has requested of myself, and I have requested of them, additional information in regards to the Nexus Gas Pipeline Project. Those questions continue to be, I did receive a letter yesterday at 4:30 that was forwarded on to all of you today in regards to their position as it pertains to the Township properties in which they're seeking easements that are also part of the Ford Lake Hydro Project Boundary. There is one map you have in front of you that I think might be helpful, honestly, the Ford Lake Project Boundary. It is the, the map that has the bright red line that goes across the north part of the, what I call the North Hydro Park. And this is an easement they have requested. As you can see from the outline, they intend to go around the Iron River and cross under the river, and then come across the North Hydro Park and continue on with their pipeline project. This request is not, you know, putting aside that we've not actually negotiated or begun negotiations, or even started talking about anything to do with an easement, there's a couple of issues that I've identified in previous letters, in which today's letter from them was somewhat of a response to. This North Hydro Park is also considered to be part of the township's project boundary as it pertains to the Ford Lake Hydro Station. In other words, it's our property, but it's also considered, under the jurisdiction of FERC, a different division of FERC. As you know, FERC is a very large monolithic agency of the federal government. They have pipeline divisions, hydro divisions, and this property that is called the Ford Lake Project Boundary includes the North Hydro Park and the South Hydro Park. And in order for the township to convey an easement to anyone, be it Nexus Gas or anyone else, we have to, we have, we have, as part of our FERC licensing requirements, we have to seek authorization from FERC in advance of any conveyance to explain to them that we would like to, in this case, convey an easement that they requested. This was not very known to us by Nexus, but I kind of stumbled upon it in doing what the Board had requested we do as part of our due diligence. Michael Sernan, Sernan, who's the Township's hydro operator, Michael, as well as Jeff Allen, in discussing this so-called proposed pipeline route, we discovered, they pointed it to my attention, that this is part of the FERC project boundary and requires a separate authorization, that requires a 60-day notification to FERC before it can be conveyed to anyone. And so when I brought it to the attention of the attorneys, they acknowledged that, and they offered in their letter today to help us process the application needed for FERC, but of course, that begs the question as to why this was not actually brought to our attention at the beginning, as opposed to finding out, finding this out, because again, everything that I've told other Board members, everything that I wish I could do over again in your life, whether it's personal or professional, are things that you do in haste, and nobody likes to be rushed into any kind of decision-making. And it doesn't change the, doesn't change the facts, but we have to know exactly and be transparent as to what we're talking about here. And so in this particular case, it has come to our attention, they have confirmed that we do need to get approval, so to speak, from a different division of FERC in regards to these properties. In addition, there were some other environmental impact requirements, which they also acknowledge, and they say in their letter that they've completed those. And they also, they're also going to state that they are going to prepare a more fulsome, I'm not sure that we're meant at first, a more fulsome package for our review that will be delivered to us in the near future. So that's fine. I don't know what that was, is going to include until we receive it, but obviously, there's additional information that needs to be reviewed once it has been received. So that obviously is one, something I wanted to bring to the Board's attention, that that's a separate requirement over and above what other negotiations may involve with Nexus, that is preparing a separate letter slash application requesting approval to, for that to be considered. At the same time, we continue to try and get our arms around this issue of the petition that was filed over a year ago by Nexus Gas Transmission, in which they are seeking a waiver of the odorization requirements of at least seven miles of pipeline, and maybe more, depending on future development, in regards to the odorization requirements that, for the section of pipeline that goes through Ipsaline Township. The purpose, as far as I can tell, of the odorization requirements in the first place is for, it's for the protection of the public health and safety. In other words, if there's a pipeline going through miles and miles of rural property, there's no population there, that could smell a gas leak if one occurred, the requirement is not there, but as you go into more urban areas and get into a more intense level of classification, there is a requirement that the pipeline be odorized. We have, we've circled this issue before, and we've asked questions about that before. I think during the Christmas holidays, there was probably three or four letters that went back and forth, we'd be trying to get confirmation on that issue. We did receive a copy of the petition that was filed on January the 12th of last year. And then we also received on December 20th, additional technical information from Nexus that was designed to support their position as to why they wanted to have this odorization waiver granted. As far as I can tell right now, the agency that's in charge of, if you're saying thumbs up or thumbs down to that authorization, is a different agency than FERC. It's called the Pipeline Hazardous Safety Administration Agency, and they've not yet made a decision on that request. In a previous letter to the Board, I did inquire as to whether or not the Township Board wanted to contact the Congresswoman Debbie Dingell's office to inquire, or to request that we be allowed to weigh in on that issue, because that issue has not been weighed in. The Board may or may not have a position on that issue, but to the extent that the timeline may have already come and gone for us to make an objection, it's hard to make an objection if you don't, if you don't know that there's been a request for a variance to begin with. I'm not sure the notification that was supposed to be followed, because it's been over a year ago, but I do, I do think right now that most parties I've talked to, including ACM and Rad and the Washington County Resource Water Condition's Office, and other state agencies, none of them have, none of them were aware that this request for the waiver had been presented. And as far as Rad and ACM goes, they support the Township's position in regards, if there is one taken, in regards to the odorization, because this pipeline is also going to go through their property, and they have a lot of other strategic issues associated with their development. And I believe I can say that they would like to see the section of pipeline odorized in their property as well. So that's, that's a, that's a separate issue, but it's still one of those issues that are going on. I did inquire, because it came up by the Board in some of the meetings, as to the actual basis or need for the pipeline. And while it may not fall within the Township's jurisdiction to make that judgment call as to what, as to why it's needed, I did inquire because we were told that a percentage of the gas is being produced and transported for sale to the neighbors to our north, Canada. So I did ask that question, just what percentage of the gas, if they could tell me, is designated for Canada? And there's not been any kind of a response in regards to that inquiry. And maybe the answer is, I don't know. But if that's the answer, then just tell me, I don't know, but until they answer the question, I'm just left to, I don't, I don't have an answer myself, because that's not been, that's not been responded to. So there's a lot of different moving parts that are going on right now. I've talked with the, the legal people from Bowling Green, and I've also talked with the people down there, and their situation may be a little bit different, but at the same time, I do believe right now that we're, I'm still in a fact gathering mode, or information gathering mode, I guess, to try and get all the issues together, so that if the Board does authorize tonight, myself and the other attorney to negotiate, we at least would do so with the, with the understanding that no authorization to negotiate any easement can be accomplished without the Board weighing in and saying thumbs up or thumbs down. In other words, negotiations would be just that, it's, it's not any kind of endorsement that you're going to have an agreement, but it allows us to continue to, at least, myself to continue to, at least, try and gather the information to the questions that have been asked by the Township Board. But obviously, the concern right now is in regards to the FERC license. We cannot grant easements without getting FERC approval. There's a 60-day requirement, as I mentioned. And in fact, if you actually convey property to a party without having FERC approval in advance, the Township could be in violation of its FERC license, and obviously, that, that cannot happen either. So there are a lot of different parts to this project, and again, I know there's a full court press being put on the Township and on our office to try and meet their timeline, but again, I am not going to be rushed into doing something that's not fully understood, and nor would I expect the Township Board to do that, and nor would I expect the Township Board to sign a, a blank check for anyone, whether it's attorneys or anybody else, to, without having all this information fully understood, vetted, and brought back for final consideration. So I know I'm covering a lot of different parts of this, but it's been a pretty much ongoing, consuming process since our last Board meeting on December 20th.
You spoke to the people in Ohio as well, correct?
Yes, yes.
And my unders, can you summarize that conversation, or is that a violation of attorney?
No, the, the situation of Bowling Green is Bowling Green owned some, owns property that's located outside the corporate limits of Bowling Green. It may be located like 10 miles outside of the actual corporate boundaries, but it's, but the property does belong to Bowling Green. Talking with the people, I've talked to at least, the easement that Nexus requested of them was going to, I think, come, in their opinion, too close to where they draw their water to supply not only Bowling Green, it may be a regional water authority, I'm not really, I'm not really certain as to how much. Anyways, it was somehow, they felt too close for comfort for their position in regards to the water, and they were in the process of negotiating, and when they decided not to negotiate anymore, they pretty much ended any more conversations about relocating the pipeline away from the water supply source to their, to their satisfaction. And I think that pretty much they're of the opinion that Nexus, once they get their certificate, which they think they're going to be getting sometime, maybe this month or next month, will probably just file the eminent domain proceedings in the federal court system, and then just simply, what they do at that point, they just take the property, or try to take the property, and then they argue about value after the fact. So there's no, there's no more conversations at that point.
They can't hear you, Doug.
That's right.
People can't hear you. You can pull it, it moves. These are new microphones, so we're getting used to them.
Well, hopefully you heard enough that I'll have to dial over again.
Right, no.
Not sure we're left off beyond the fact that simply, their situation is similar, it's also different, but they, they understand that if they don't, you know, their negotiations, when they, when they, when they don't negotiate, then they're pretty much.
Triggers.
They're, at some point.
Board action for eminent domain?
It won't be, it won't trigger Board action, but it does, it gives the, the Nexus, you know, they've, they've all exhausted any opportunities to negotiate, and they'll simply go into the court system to take the property and argue about value down the road. Biggest concern I have right now is, again, the impact all this has upon the Township's parks, the issue about the hydro station, as well as the timing and conflict with the development of ACM. And those are very, very strategic issues, and this project cannot hinder or delay, in my opinion, the development course the ACM is on. There's too much at stake for the Township. We waited too long for this to, probably to be developed, and that's my biggest concern. Or one of the biggest concerns.
Other comments or questions? Trustee Jim?
Yeah, Attorney Winters, if Nexus proceeds with eminent domain in court, how long do those proceedings normally last? Or how long does that procedure normally take to, how long will they hinder them to actually obtain eminent domain?
Very quickly, very quickly. They, once they make their filing and they have their court hearing of necessity, then usually, again, the property, the issue really becomes more along the lines of compensation as opposed to the right to simply take the property. In our situation here, it could be a little bit more complicated, only because, again, another division of FERC has jurisdiction over some of the same property that they're trying to take. So I'm not really sure how that will play into it, but in normally, in normally speaking, it will happen very, very quickly. So, thank you.
Trustee Ross Williams?
Thank you. I know you had said, and I want to make sure I'm scrabbling my notes, but also that you asked a question about the basis of pipeline. So in other words, what percentage of gas, or what have you, that is generated by this project would be in Canada versus, like I'm assuming, the US? And they couldn't give you an answer yet, which is concerning in itself, because if I have it correct, eminent domain also requires that it still has some beneficial impact inside of. inside of the community as a whole that this particular pipeline would be going through. And also, I guess, I'm, I'm also concerned about the, it seems like it's a press in order to try and have the pipeline commence before basically getting the important approval that you talked about in regards to the wildlife situations over at, by the dam and the easements there. So I guess my question is, did you get any insight during your meetings with NEXIS or discussions or have you on email or through email? Why are they so pressed in order to have this done immediately before having that, very important, might as well say, approval from the FERC as it relates to the wildlife?
From what I can tell, Trustee Williams, is that they have a very aggressive schedule, that they intend to have this pipeline fully constructed and implemented hively through, May through September. And they're going to move extremely rapidly. And in terms of what I can tell right now, it's just, whether it's coincidental or whether it's just, you know, the way it turned out, I'm not really sure. It just seems like their, their construction schedule is on the same parallel path as the construction schedule for ACM. And so, again, I don't know if it was, anybody could foresee this happening quite that way, but I don't think that their, that their rush to get started is going to supersede the ACM project. And until they, we get more intelligent, more informed answers on some of the questions, I don't, I just don't, I know they're in, they're going to hurry up and try and press to get the easements needed, but they've been working on this for at least two or three years. And so they're in the 12th hour and at the same time, they've had a full year on this issue of the odorization. And I can recall some of the board members here asking these questions about odorization. There was the deer in the headlights look at times, like they didn't know what we were talking about. As it turned out, well, obviously, they knew what you're asking for because it's been going on for over a full year. So I, again, it's, sometimes it's a lack of transparency and just the lack of being forthright on some of these information questions. I'm not, whatever information, whatever answer I get, I can't change that or try and fit it into a different, you know, analysis. I just need to know what is the real truth here and I don't want to be asking, I don't want someone to ask for easements when they know that we cannot legally even give those without having a pre-approval. So I don't really know if they're on a timeline, that they feel that they cannot delay their project at all. I just don't know, but you can see there's a real intense, even in the letter I sent you today, you can see where they've also requested that they're, the board have an agenda item scheduled for February 7th to basically sign off on everything. So again, I just, I don't think it's the right way of doing it. I don't think it's the professional way of doing it. I don't think it's one that takes into consideration that the board has valid questions and valid concerns. And I know you've heard from other people prior to tonight, but I just say we just need to make sure that everything that was being presented is, that we're doing it with our eyes wide open. And that way you can make a better decision as long as you do it with your eyes wide open.
Clerk Row?
I just kind of maybe add a little bit more to Monica's own question. When we met with Larry and I and Doug after our last meeting, if I'm not mistaken, they kind of indicated they're expecting to have full-blown move ahead, like I'm expecting like any day. I think they said like second week or in January. But the, the letter that came out, I don't know if you got a chance to read it, that we sent out today, that Doug had got it in regards to all those issues that you were raising, Monica says that, that they actually have all those permits. They said fortunately, FERC and part of the environmental regulatory review conducted for the project date have already concluded consultations and obtained the requisite permits, concurrences, and approvals associated with all the environmental impacts associated with the project route and crossing method, namely the subsurface crossing, because they're planning on doing, they're not going through the water, they're doing a directional bore that's going to go, I can't remember, it was quite a ways. Do you remember Larry, how many feet under the river? Was it 60 or something?
Forty-two.
Yeah, it was quite, yeah, it was pretty, it was pretty deep. Larry asked all the technical questions because I don't really understand that, but he seemed to have understood it. But anyways, including the affected township tracts for the drilling. These include the NEXIS final environmental impact statement issued by FERC on November 30th, United States Fish and Wildlife Biological Opinion for the project issued on November 14th, 2016, and the recently issued MDEQ Water Resources Division has already given them a permit authorizing construction of the project in Lenoway, Monroe, and Washington Counties. It gives a permit number and they got that on January 10th. And so anyways, they thought that was enough and they're going to say enough to meet the requirements of the hydro license notification, blah, blah, blah. So they thought it would be relatively routine.
Trustee Row?
Um, I would just like to say thank you, first of all, Doug. I know how much work you've put into this and I probably talked to you way more than you ever wanted me to about the pipeline, but just the same concerns that I think I'm, you know, mirroring off of what Monica and Jimmy have already brought up. I understand even reading their letter, how much of an urgency they have and I get it. It's, you know, their business, there's a bottom line, but these are our residents and our township and it's not going anywhere. So I appreciate you saying not to do anything in haste. So even, you know, in the letter, he talks about having a more fulsome package and I think that we deserve to see that now, if that's something that they have available. It's just a matter of transparency and really understanding who we're doing business with. It's just about, you know, the principle of that. So I appreciate your points there, Doug.
Thank you. I know Trustee Row just sent the MDEQ permit that came on January 10th and I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at that. But you know, it's about, I don't know, 65, 70 pages, I don't know.
It's two books.
And I know they talk about United States Fish and Wildlife, that was only issued on December 14th. You know, it's only been 30 days and there was some holidays in between the time period when we were shut down. But at the same time, I know Jeff Allen and Michael Sernan also pointed out and there's also a requirement having to do with the Michigan historic, or this historic preservation as it pertains to that dam. And I don't know if that's actually included in these so-called permits they reference in this letter. And I'm not, and I'm not really sure if all of these ones they cite of December 14th and January 10th, I don't know if they address everything that has to be checked off in conjunction with the FERC license as well as with the fact that the township did receive significant funds from the Michigan Natural Trust Resource that also has a different requirement for endangered species. And they have, they have to have a no effect impact statement before construction can occur, at least in regards to the North Hydro Parks. I don't know if these licenses really truly are the one and the same anyways. I know they, United States Fish and Wildlife, I understand what they're supposed to stand for, but some of these other impacts are supposed to be at the state level in conjunction with the funding requirement that we receive or funding restrictions. And there's also certain types of other restrictive covenants that we have to include in these easements anyways as it pertains to our FERC license. So again, it would have been a lot easier for everyone involved if at the beginning they just, because in their letter, they seemingly acknowledged pretty readily that yes, we're aware of your FERC license, we're aware of what you have here and we don't think it's going to be a problem for you. That's fine, but it's our license, it's not yours. And so it'd been nice for them to, and then they even now offer to help prepare the application and pay for it to go to FERC, where that might have been something that we could have talked about earlier than tonight had we known what they knew. So when someone, this is my own personal observation, when someone is doesn't, is not forthcoming on things that are critical until you discover them, then you have to, at least in the back of your mind, any reasonable person is, what else should I be aware of that I don't know that you know? Because if I had to tell you things that you already knew, which I didn't, that I can't tell you anything else I don't know if you, I don't know. I know, so it makes sense, even though it sounds kind of convoluted, I'm just, right now, just somewhat concerned that there may be other trap doors out there that I'm just not aware of. And I know that ACM is concerned about it and I know they're very concerned about the construction schedule. And those things need to be negotiated because they cannot hinder that project because they just can't do it. And so that's the, you know, that's, that environmental impacts, the township's concerns on the FERC licensing, there's a whole basket of issues here that need to be dealt with. And to say they have to be done in the next two weeks so that they'll be on board for the township board's February 7th agenda, I don't think that's their, that's their call to make. But, you know, so we'll do whatever the board directs, if anything, this evening. And again, I still think the odorization issue is important to see whether or not we can weigh in on that issue. Maybe the 12th hour, but we didn't know about it till the 12th hour. So if you don't want to weigh in on that, that's fine too. But I do think if we're going to at least raise the issue as to why should they be allowed, I know Sierra Club sent a letter out to township today in which they also express, you know, concerns about the wisdom of not having odorization in an urban area. So again, some of these issues may be technical, they may be engineering, they may be something beyond all of our pay grades, but they're legitimate questions to ask. Again, I don't think we should be rushed into saying, we trust you, when right now I don't have, I don't think that's something that has been, has been demonstrated.
Trustee Ross Williams?
Thank you. I also wanted to point out, and I thank you Clerk Row for reading some of the letter. I also wanted to point out in, and I think the letter came yesterday, so the meeting is today, but in paragraph four, it speaks about, and I'll just read it. "The hydro license compensates the township as the current licensee may grant and convey an easement for pipelines across the project land that's governed by the license after submitting a letter to FERC outlining the proposed conveyance, see Article 16." "Accordingly, as a part of this overall standing request for the township to act on its proposed easements, NEXIS respectfully requests that the township make this submittal to FERC pursuant to the hydro license with respect to the affected parcels." So in other words, and I don't know if I'm reading that correct, they're still saying, okay, well, we may have all these licenses at, you know, the bottom three paragraphs, but they're still asking for the township itself to make a submittal to FERC in pursuance of the hydro license and the affected parcels. Do I, am I reading that correct or?
Well, what it means right now is that they cannot make this application to FERC in their own name because the license is issued to the township. We have the license. So they're telling us, you can go ahead and do it now, trust us, what we have here is going to meet their criteria, so just go ahead and apply for it and don't worry about that issue because we've already done all the homework for you. Problem is, right now, there's a 60-day timeline that has to be, before FERC will even supposedly make a decision on that. So even if it's routine, it's going to take 60 days for them to, they have 60 days to determine whether or not they agree that that will not have a negative impact upon the project boundary in conjunction with the license. So it's our license, so they're telling us, go ahead and submit a letter on two of the parcels that we're seeking easements from. But those two parcels, of course, I'm not saying the other parcels are not important, but those two parcels are, of course, the North Hydro Park and South Hydro Park on that map you're looking at on the screen over there. So again, I don't think the township needs to be told when to apply for a license with FERC. I mean, we've, we've done pretty well over the years in meeting our obligations to FERC in regards to the hydro station. But again, when you, if you recall, this, this letter here actually starts out by indicating, you know, I sent two letters before this letter was received. I sent one on January the 10th and January 15th, only because they're saying time is of the essence. Okay, I take it you're word that it is. But then if time is of the essence, I shouldn't have to write two letters to ask for information and then when I finally do get the letter at 4:30 yesterday, you're telling me, trust us, go ahead and do it, don't worry about it. Well, that may be my interpretation of what it is, but I, again, I, I just don't like to advise the board to just say, go ahead and send out a letter saying this is okay when we don't know exactly if it's in proper form or not. My, my opinion probably is right now that it's not in proper form because I don't think FERC has all the information that we could submit. I don't want to do it in a piecemeal fashion anyways. I don't want to have an application being filed on two parcels while there's other unknowns about the other seven parcels. Do it the right way, businesslike manner, due diligence, good faith, and that's the way it has to be. I mean, all these years of being an attorney, that's what I've always strived to do, is don't do things in a piecemeal fashion. This one here kind of requests the township to do that. Go ahead and file that letter, don't worry about everything else, it's routine. Well, like you said, it's, it's your community, it's our community, it's not theirs. So we can do whatever, we can follow the timeline that we should, but not their timeline because they may not be the one and the same.
I have a question for eminent domain. Is that for a public purpose?
Yes, you know, they, they have all the, all the pipelines are, you know, they, like railroads, like everything.
Well, yeah, I know, but I was just wondering if so, because if you read all the information, it's going to Canada.
Some of it is.
Yeah, a lot of it is.
I don't know what to say.
But my only, the question before us tonight is, should we authorize negotiations? But it's not saying we're authorizing the sale of the property?
No, there's no, there'd be no, there's no endorsement of, you know, of, that you're going to have it, that you're going to reach an agreement, but...
But it allows you to get the more information that you
Just to negotiate in good faith, that means we get all the, we're going to ask for all the information I've been asking for, maybe more now, but you know, but you can't, you know, there's no, in fact, one of the concerns we have is, and again, I keep coming back to this issue right now, but the board has to give some direction at some point in time is, are one of the conditions going to be that they drop their waiver or that they withdraw their waiver on trying to get a variance for the odorization? I have a real issue with that because the 255-mile pipeline they're installing is only a seven-mile section that we're talking about here. And I, I don't know, I just, I know they explained to Larry and Karen and myself that day as to why they didn't want, or why they sought the waiver, but again, I, we have more questions than I do answers as to their explanation on that waiver. And I feel very strong that if it's a public health safety requirement, then it should not be, you know, waived and without good cause. And I don't think that they've shown good cause from what I've read. That's just, again, my interpretation of that, that the board has to be the one to weigh in on.
The project milestones that were put in, the Sierra Club sent us a copy of the actual permit that they applied for last year, January. And it, I mean, according to this, they are expecting the FERC certificate in the fourth quarter of 2016 and then start construction in the first quarter of 2017.
Well, they're, they're, they may be behind because I think right now they told us on December 20th, they thought they were going to have the certificate in 30 days. Well, it's pretty close to 30 days right now and they seem to be indicating in this letter, it may be a few more weeks. So I don't know.
Is that for the, the actual waiver?
No, that's for the certificate of necessity that allows them to go forward with the construction. I think it's their position, they don't have, they can start with the construction without having a final decision on the odorization because that's something they would do at the end as opposed to at the beginning. And that's why there may be still some time to weigh in on that issue if the board so desires, but...
Can we weigh on it, make our objections in court too? Or can you not raise those comments?
I don't think the odorization issue is going to be I don't think the odorization issue is going to be one that the court will listen to in an eminent domain proceeding. But I do think right now that you, we do have a very active Congress lady, Congresswoman, that we would, you know, could reach out to, as well as to look to some engineering assistance if we need to, to make the argument, because it may require some technical. But again, it's gonna come down to a decision by the board, or we just continue to go forward and wait to see what they do with this waiver. But again, there is a public safety component, and I know they've offered to put extra thickening or extra large, larger size pipe that they feel might mitigate the possibility of a rupture. But then again, you know, just, it's a risk that, you know, the hazardous pipeline administration agency is there for a reason, is there to ensure public safety. And I think waivers should be, grances are going to be granted with good cause, and should be the exception, not the rule. And I just don't know exactly if they've met that criteria.
I think attorney winners is, I think if we're gonna need, I mean, if we move, if we don't want to, and they're just gonna go to eminent domain, then that's one issue. But if we do this other route, which is at least to begin negotiations, like, I'm not clear, I know that they had said in the meeting that in order to get the waiver, they had to present all this other stuff that will make that seven miles, which is in our township. We're the only ones that have that, that they're asking the waiver from, because that's where the population's at, that they would put in, I don't know how many inches more pipe and much more monitoring equipment, blah, blah, blah. But I don't, it seems to me that that, for us to, like, make a decision on whether that makes sense versus putting the odor in, we, to me, I think that you need a specialist that's a neutral party that's gonna tell you, it's like, the other one's gonna tell you when it leaks, but what, is that the statistics show, or is there data out there that shows that that's more dangerous, because by the time you smell it leaking, you're in more danger? Or would it be better to have a thicker pipe so it doesn't leak with more of the monitoring that would show you that there was issue? So, it would be hard for me to even say...
They could do both.
Which one of them, yeah, they could.
They could do both.
Which, you know, that could be part of your negotiations. But anyways, yeah, so, I mean, I have no idea which one's safer, you know, other than no pipe at all.
Right.
We're not gonna win that fight, so...
Trustee Ross, will you?
Yeah, I just have one last question for attorney winners. Considering, like you said, you did ask for the letter, or better yet, notification in regards to what are you aware of the FERC requirements, especially when it comes to the wildlife situation over by the Ford Hydro Dam on the 10th, and they gave this letter to you on the 16th. Also, considering that they had known, if I have it correct, that they have been wanting to do this, do this project, from what you said, for over two years, what basis exists that NEXAS would even enter into good faith negotiations with the township? I guess I have a question there.
Well, and that's, that's probably the, the unknown, is I think it's probably why, you know, if you authorize negotiations, we're gonna find out pretty quickly, because I continue to try and ask for the information, and if it's not forthcoming, once we actually have the authorization, then I think we'll find out pretty quickly. I don't know if I do have an expectation at this point as to how they're going to proceed beyond the fact that they simply say trust us, because it seems to be their kind of a position. But right now, you have to earn trust, and right now, I don't, just don't, I don't have a very good, comfortable feeling that so far, that's been the way the negotiations have gone, so, or at least the conversations have gone. And so, I don't know if I can really answer that beyond the fact that we're just gonna have to probably, you know, go forward, and we'll have to, but if we go forward, we're gonna find out pretty quickly what they're, you know, they talk about this fulsome package, so maybe there's something in this fulsome package that's going to change my perspective as to how they've been dealing so far. But at this point in time, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be very, very guarded in regards to, and I think that ultimately, right now, the, there is a court of law, there's also a court of public opinion. And I think right now, that's, the public opinion right now is, you have to proceed in good faith. And attorneys take care of the issues in the court, but we have to take care of the issues that really are before this board in a way that we know we've done our due diligence. And so, again, they may not answer everything the way they would like to, beyond the fact that we're just gonna have to not be pressured or be pushed in an aggressive manner, we need to get the answers to the questions. And if we don't get the answers, then we're not going to bring back anything for the board to even consider, because we won't do that.
What triggers filing eminent domain? Like, at what point does that, because I don't, I don't know, we haven't had this issue before.
It's more, I'll just be kind of vague about that, this will be more along the lines of if negotiations are not continuing and...
So, if we don't authorize negotiations, that is a signal to them legally that they can go right to court?
Well, yeah, if you don't want to negotiate, then there won't be nothing for them to do but to go to, because they have, they would have no choice.
Right.
But to go that, that route. And again, if you do authorize, it's been done in good faith on our part, it's not gonna, it's not any kind of a, we have legitimate questions, I've been asking these questions even before the authorization is voted on tonight, if it is voted on. So, but we have to at least, just because someone has the eminent power doesn't mean they just simply pick and choose timelines, pick and choose schedules, pick and choose everything, and it's like it's one, it's a one-way street. They don't, they don't get that luxury of just doing everything they want to do. But it is a very powerful tool that's reserved for public purposes, and so, I think at least if we're gonna go into it, we have to go into the idea of knowing that we have to be very steadfast that we're going to expect our concerns to be addressed and any questions answered.
So, it's legal advice that we enter negotiations in order...
I believe it'd be...
Prior to allowing them to proceed with eminent domain, that we could get more information?
I believe the township would be, I would advise the township to have those negotiations, and I would also suggest, or at least recommend that, that we also request that that negotiations, you know, specifically address the odorization issues and all the issues associated with the FERC licensing permit. We don't want to do anything to damage that issue or the schedule for ACM. Those are all going to be part of those negotiations, and those can certainly be telegraphed to them. I have no problem stating that publicly as to what those negotiations need to address. There's a lot of issues that I've identified, and there's probably a lot more that I haven't. But those are some of the real key issues that need to be addressed.
Like public purpose would be one. You know, initially, when they started all the conversations, it was supposed to be because of the vortex winter that we had, and that there wasn't enough supply, and now it's going to Canada. So, that just, it just doesn't make sense to me. It seems more like a money issue as opposed to a real need, because, you know, and we do need to heat and all of that, and to alternative energy, which is gonna be way far behind now. But I just, it's hard to vote for a resolution that you don't support it and then vote to do negotiations. But if we don't do negotiations, it will not delay. It's an opportunity to gather more information prior to potential eminent domain. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
I know you're not supposed to say honest, I, I'm just trying to understand, it's just hard to vote for something you don't believe in, but at the same time, if it's legal strategy, you know, does that get you more information, which will help you in We can discuss it more, we gotta go to, into the regular meeting. And Doug, the only thing is, on this map, it doesn't have the pipeline going underneath the, underneath the water.
Yeah.
No, right here, it goes in here?
No, it's going over there.
It's hard to see, I think it's like a little...
So, that's a red?
Red is where they're going under the river.
So, it is further from the dam?
Yeah, it's not where they originally had showed us a long time ago.
Oh, they changed it?
I don't, they told us, oh, I know, it had to do with YCA's tanks.
I was gonna say, but it's closer to the tank.
That's why they moved it, so they wouldn't jeopardize the tanks.
Well, I do know we received a lot of emails from residents and environmentalists and other communities and neighbors on this issue. So, it's a big decision to make, whether we should negotiate to delay. I don't know. I'd say no, I'm gonna go right to court. I think it's, I don't know. All right, we can adjourn the meeting?
Adjourn it, 7:02.
And we'll go right into the regular meeting.